Hello, family. I'm sorry I had to restart the um, the live because it was like not picking up good first, right? So um, I wanted to restart it so you can make sure you can hear me. Because today's message and shadow work session and the lesson is learn to listen, okay? That is the name of this segment or this episode on shadow work sessions. Excuse me, fam, I just ate today. And what we're gonna be talking about, um, you guys may have this book, you may have ordered this book. Hey, I'm Sharon. Hey, 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 I see you sis. Um, today's shadow work session is learn to listen, okay? That is the name of today's shadow work sessions, family. And this is what I'm, this is what I'm speaking on today. That's why I'm not on camera. Today is about listening, okay? Hey, family. Hey, Sandra. Um, thank you for joining today's shadow work session. Today is gonna be a good session. We're gonna talk about, and I have my jazz playing in the background and it's raining, it's pretty dark and cloudy here today. I hope you guys are doing well. I am doing very well. I hope all is well. I'm listening from work. Okay, it's a perfect day to just listen, okay? Because that's the name of the actual shadow work sessions today is learn to listen, okay? So, family, today's shadow work session is from the book called Shadow Work, which I had available for sale in my shop. Some of you received this book and some of you may have not, and I'm gonna have this book again available in the shop because they sold out pretty quickly, as well as the other books that I normally get that are geared towards shadow work like healing the inner child and so forth. But today's is gonna be from Danielle Massey. She is, um, she's a therapist or so forth, you know, um. She wrote this book, but she wrote this book about facing hidden fears, heal trauma and awakening your dream life. But I'm gonna tell you what made me go back to this book because I have read this book, but also I love the different parts of this book that I can go back and reference to. And um, and I'm gonna share the book with you guys um, later on so you'll know what book to look for in the shop if you wanna get it again. So I'll probably have this book soon, um, again. But learn to listen was a chapter, chapter six, which goes back to Mars, right? Um, in her book. And in the book she talked about, you know, how, you know, she went through the fall of 2021 and things started shifting for her, right? And we all can resonate with that when we are going through the shift. We're going through the awakening, we're going through things that are becoming loud to us, such as like listening to, you know, uh, maybe even certain, you know, frequency music or listening to, you know, tarot and uh, you know, getting, you know, getting something that you feel like you need, right? To touch your subconscious mind, right? And so she started having all these things happening in her life. Of course, she was a mother, she talked about a lot about her children and how her daughter and stuff had played a big part of her son. And she even, you know, went through the whole thing of understanding, you know, her spirit, her spirit was urging for her to do like meditation and so forth. So she was learning all about that, but she was also learning about how to connect to spirit and how to really just listen, right? And so we all have to start really thinking about that. Hey, Tansalas, we have to start um, thinking about how and if we are listening. That's why the name of this segment is learn to listen. When I read this chapter of the book, it definitely reminded me of like, you know, I, I was just telling the spiritual family how just the night before, there was some knocks, right? Knock, 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 loud, 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 loud knocks in my room, okay? It woke me up out of a dream. I was telling the spiritual family, it woke me up out of a dream. It was so loud and I woke up and it scared me, it startled me. And at that point, it startled me, but then it came to my, oh, that's spirit, that's the ancestors. Let me get myself together, let me go into meditation. What is the ancestors? You guys are trying to contact me, trying to connect with me. Let's go, right? But those are the signs, those are the things. You must learn to listen, right? I knew then it was time to move into meditation because it was something that the ancestors wanted to say, wanted me to know, and still maybe something that they still trying to get attention to me for, right? And so uh, even Tansalas was saying this had happened to her, you know? So it was crazy that both of us had these same notions and things that were happening in our life, but then the spirit put it on me today and that may have been the message, learn to listen, okay? That may have been the message that the ancestors wanted me to deliver as well to you. So I say that to say because it brought me back to the shadow work book that I used to sell and I read before. Because one of her chapters was learn to listen and how she acquired the way of listening to spirit, listening to the divine. You know, your guides will guide you, your ancestors are your guides, you know? Whoever deities or whatever, but your ancestors is the first line of defense. And the most high is our ancestor too, okay? But short meditations and things like that sometimes work, but sometimes, family, the ancestors want you to really just sit and listen. You don't have to do anything special, you don't have to do any like, you know, get up and change something or move something. No, just listen, right? So she talked about in this book about how owls, you know, had a common thing for her and she was getting all these signs and synchronicities, right? And she went into, she started talking about all the different signs and synchronicities she was getting from her guides and some of them she was ignoring, you know, but she didn't know because she was still kind of fresh on her journey. You know, maybe a year, maybe not even a year, maybe six months, you know, into her journey. So she was trying to learn. And some of us are still, hey, I'm Eldra, and some of us are still trying to learn. And some of us aren't paying attention and we're ignoring the ancestors. We're not listening, right? So the aspect in this chapter that she talked about, which I love, is called cosmic breadcrumbs. And I'mma read a little bit to you from her book about cosmic breadcrumbs. And this is in the chapter about us learning to listen in the shadow work book, okay? Everything happens for a reason, period. I'mma repeat that. Everything happens for a reason. Every heartbreak, every betrayal, every loss, seemingly hopeless situations was designed by the universe to move you in one direction or another. And I was just talking about that too with the tower moment on is it for you? It's like all things happen for a reason, family. This is often easier to see in hindsight than it is while we're in the thick of it though, right? So often during shadow work, you know, you should recount your lowest moments of your life and then with extreme gratitude that these low moments led you to an unimaginable highs and sometimes even towards their soul's purpose or your soul's purpose is what she was stating, right? Which makes all the sense and that goes back to what I always tell you guys about. And sometimes we, I have to think through it too. Like my, my worst moments have brought me to push me into a way that I have made good decisions. I have made maybe sometimes even rash decisions. I've made changes, right? I've transformed things. I've moved in a different direction, you know? Because it has moved us into unexplainable, you know, unimaginable highs from those major lows. And she said, "When the universe wants you to alter your current course or your path, it will often attempt to gently lead you down a new path and that's on that wheel." It said, she says, "I call these paths the cosmic breadcrumbs." Now I love this, okay? So if you're thinking on, you know, on a, on a la, on a wheel basis, how most of us here do, that wheel is what she's calling the cosmic breadcrumbs, the paths on that. And she says, "Because of the trail that is being led out before your feet." So breadcrumbs are normally like, you know, little crumbs that are led out that are, you know, pasting something together is what the breadcrumbs do, right? So she's calling it a cosmic breadcrumbs, okay? And when you become skilled at following these cosmic breadcrumbs, which is your path, your higher self, life becomes exceedingly simple because your movements, your behaviors and your choices are all divinely led. But they're divinely led for a reason. That's not to say that life will be sunshine and roses and love and light all the time or a hundred percent of the time, no. There may still be some difficult moments, family. We must learn to listen. That's why I'm not on camera today because I want you to listen to the words that are in these chapters that coincide with how we should look at our, our shadow selves and try to move through these things that may be those, you know, unexpected or those things that, you know, the ancestors is trying to walk us through and it's all about us listening sometimes, right? So she says here, "The breadcrumbs, life becomes, you know, exceedingly simple because movements, behaviors and choices are divinely led, okay? But there may still be difficult moments, family. Life is life after all and we're here to have a full human experience, yes. But when you're following the cosmic breadcrumbs, you'll find that you're less at war with yourself and more at peace with your life because you have a deeper understanding and a profound connection to the universe and to spirit as it guides you down the paths that feel completely aligned, right? The opposite is true. When you're not listening to the signs you're being given, before being diagnosed with cancer, she said, she had years of signs pointing her towards slowing down and resting and eating right and, you know, doing the different things. But she ignored the cosmic, the cosmic breadcrumbs, excuse me. They don't want me to say this, mm, okay? But the messages became, became much louder and louder, family, for her and for us too. And intense. You wonder why you start having things happening back to back in your life. Something you're not seeing, something you're not listening to in your mind's eye is what I'm talking about, in your soul and your spirit. And so she just started listing out these examples of different things that she ignored that, that she called cosmic breadcrumbs, which were things that were trying to lead her on the right path and also trying to help her process and move through the shadow and bring things from darkness to light. The things that she should have been doing, you know, that could have took her to another level, right? That typically showed, you know, and it, it sometimes shows when people have these major things that constantly keep happening in their life because they're not facing themselves, they're not turning within. So they ignore and we all ignore the signs sometimes, you know? And the universe is often trying to communicate with us as well as the ancestors is trying to communicate with us to help us heal from our shadow before our shadow becomes all encompassing of our life and our path. And if we can act early, our unconscious memories are not given the opportunity to create disorder with that, within our minds, our bodies and our energy and our soul, she says. But when we ignore the cosmic breadcrumbs we are given, the information is stuck in the shadow and can wreak havoc on us as the shadow. Information grows beyond capacity and spills out into our subconscious and our conscious awareness. Not to mention that when we are able to follow the path, the universe is working to put us on through that shadow work and healing. Our lives become infinitely easier when we're working with thyself, when we're turning within, when we're not pointing the finger all the time at others and pointing it back at self, looking in the mirror and reflecting. This is why listening to the nudges from our ancestors and from the universe's important family on your spiritual journey. The cosmic breadcrumbs can look like a variety of things, okay? It can look like those numbers that you're seeing, the synchronicities of numbers and the repetitiveness of things that are happening in your life. Hey, Chrissy? And you have the opportunity that continuously presents themselves, such as being offered to speak at gigs that may have, you know, people there or even, you know, going through shadow work sessions and maybe, you know, you're ignoring it. To hearing the same song on the radio every time you start your car, she says, which is definitely something I resonate with. But begin noticing the cosmic breadcrumbs and see if you can tell what was happening right before you receive that sign from your ancestors or the universe. Now that's a good thing to think about. Whenever you have these signs and synchronicities and, and what I just told you about the numbers and even those knocks that we're hearing and um, you know, the songs that come on, something that pops up on the TV, a sound, something that pops up on your phone, a ring, whatever it is that's occurring, pay attention to what's happening, even the time, okay? That's another thing we was talking about with the spiritual family. Pay attention. These are cosmic breadcrumbs that can change the effect of your path and can even help you change the, the way you going as well as your demise. So you have to pay attention. Allow the cosmic breadcrumbs to be confirmation and validation that you're on the right path and that your ancestors is communicating with you. Whatever came is, it came to you for a reason, okay? So your spirit guides, hey, Ms. T? So your spirit guides are definitely, which is your ancestors, right? Is definitely reaching out to you in reference of, you know, these cosmic breadcrumbs, family. The things that come to us in a variety of form, right? So your spirit guides are gonna be there, they're gonna, they're gonna try to contact you, you know? They're gonna try to help you to work through these things, right? And now just understanding in what she gave us about learn to listen, which I love this chapter. She gives uh, it's called opening the door, a meditation to connect with spirit guides. So she just pretty much goes through the aspect of how to meditate, you know, sitting and breathing and doing your breathing exercises and so forth. But she also talks about in another chapter, because she also goes into how to learn to connect, you know? Learn to connect with your spiritual team, right? And a lot of that has to do with the first thing that I'm talking about and I'mma get into more of that is listening. You must learn to listen. Listen to your soul, listen to your spirit and listen to your mind and all these emotions and things that you're going through. Sometimes it's for you to sit and just listen, family. Get quiet. When you get quiet, you get clarity. A lot of talking, a lot of chatting, a lot of listening to different things also can bring fear, okay? And the only way for you to get through fear and to get to being clear is for you to listen, okay? Um, another chapter that I love that she points out embracing the shadow, right? And in reference of you listening, doing your shadow work. A lot of us need to listen and get back to our journaling. Journaling is still helpful and effective way of altering your thoughts and your behavior, family. Must journal, okay? It's a popular method in reference of shadow work sessions as well. We started with me doing journal prompts and so forth and I'mma get, excuse me, I'mma get back to that because I gotta get back to the topics. I gotta get back to shadow work because I've been going through a lot of things and I've been doing shadow work on my own, but it's time I get back to recording them like I used to, right? I feel like it'll be very helpful to the collective. Although I've done so many topics, but it's maybe time for me to update some of the topics as well with what we're currently going through. Back then we had a whole different president and everything, so um, I'm gonna get back to that. But the journaling, I still want you guys to do for, to, to help you to deal with everything that you're dealing with, okay? It will help you access also your unconsciousness, you know, your unconscious at a deeper level, your unconscious mind is what I'm trying to say, right? And so in this chapter in this book that she actually has, I love she has in here about shadow seekers method, right? She gives a method of doing some things, which I love. I'll, I'm definitely gonna promote this book again in my shop where I've had it in my shop, but it's sold out. So she says she discovered this method by witnessing herself performing shadow work, right? Um, in a particular past life, um, experiencing it. So it's called the shadow works, oh, it's shadow seekers method. And it allows you to easily re-experience moments that are tucked away in your unconscious, your subconscious. This approach uh, is the right place to interrupt and alter the subconscious feedback so you can kind of see exactly what it is that may be bothering you, something that may be distracting you from not listening, right? Because there's something that is a distraction to you not listening when it is time to receive these messages. Or even if you're receiving the messages and you're still not listening to your intuition, you're not listening to your, your spirit. You're not listening to the ancestors, right? So here is how she states it works. First set the mood for your journey. Create a comfortable environment, so get somewhere where, you know, you're not bothered, maybe a sac, a sacred space. And here's a list of things you can do to ensure that you can get to where you need to be. You can write these down or you can come back to this video and write them down later to think, to work through it, okay? When you do your shadow work, I normally do mines on Sunday, okay? Whether you're pulling cards in reference of your shadow work or whether you wanna work through this or whether you put a twist to it and do your own thing, right? Shadow work is for you, right? Nobody else, nobody else can do it but you. So see, so she lists this, she said, "Turn down any bright lights in the room, okay? Lock the door so that you won't be interrupted. Turn off your phone and email notifications." So pretty much cut off everything and communicate to anyone around you that you are not to be interrupted during this meditation. Remove any jewelry or clothing that might be in your attention such as a watch or glasses and light you a candle or an instant to create that peaceful sacred space. Choose to lie down or sit down, either is fine, but you will need to remain in whichever position you choose for a while. So make sure you're comfortable. And use any tools you enjoy interacting with such as your singing bowls, your crystals, your essentials, you see? Your cards, whatever spiritual practice or whatever tools you want to use, you can bring that as well. And when you have created this safe space, begin to meditate to the point where you are walking the edge between waking and dreaming. So that means you need to be in a silent, you know, space or even in a meditative state. That's what I'mma say, in a meditative state, okay? And we all know if you've meditated, you know, where you're in that meditative state where you're already in a whole nother realm, you know exactly what I'm referring to. This is the most important step in the process, okay? When we meditate to the point where assessing what we're caught, what they call, you know, we say a rim, but it's really the theta brainwaves which occur. It's on a whole different frequency and hertz, family. That theta brainwave state allows us access to the subconscious, unconscious mind while we are still in total control of our body and our mind. You can move into this state by guiding yourself through meditation or even listening to, you know, recorded meditations and so forth, whatever it is, right? But everyone is different, so trust what works for you, okay? I always tell you guys that, all right? And I love this shadow secrets method because it goes exactly what, what I've always told people to do. That's why I sell her book in my shop, right? But everyone is different, so trust whatever works for you. You will know when you have achieved this point by how your body feels. And when I tell you, she ain't lying, she ain't lying, you will be vibrating, all right? You will be vibrating. If you've never felt this, it's okay. But now is the time, right? And maybe now is, maybe this is your message, okay? Maybe this is a message for you to get back to doing that, right? I know it's sometimes, you know, I do the quick meditations too, you know? We don't have a lot of time or we get into our normal routine or just doing our small meditations and so forth. But the ancestors say, "Now is the time. You need to be going into that deep meditation and using your tools, right? Vibrations. Get your, raise your vibrations, raise your frequencies, you see? And so when you start feeling your body vibrating, if all the parts of your body are completely relaxed and you feel that meditative state, it's easily for you to get to that next level of, you know, being able to receive those downloads, being able to listen to spirit, speak to your soul, okay? So at this time, it's all about your, you know, calling on your spirit guides, if that's something you wanna do. You know, when you trans, when you trans, or you, I'm not gonna say transition, but when you traverse into that encounter, right? With your mind and your body, she, you know, she stays in here. You know, it's like rec, it's like her saying she's recommending you calling in your spirit guides, but you could already do that in your mind's eye. You know, when you're laying there, when you're sitting there, when you're relaxed, when you know, hey Ebony, when you know it's time to, you know, really reach out and speak to them. This is directions of what you could be doing. Ask for help during this time, repent during this time. Notice the details in this meditation that you do, you know? Sometimes this meditation, when you are, are in a meditative, meditative state and you're able to listen, family, different things will happen, right? Especially if, let's say if you're using your singing bowls in there and you meditate and then you get into that meditative state and you get to that frequency of your body changing and, and, and vibrating. Monitor your body, see how that feels to you, right? And ask ancestors and your spirit guides, you know? Um, am I on the right path? Is there anything I need to know? My higher self needs to know, you know? Um, this is a time to ask for help. You know, you could choose to ask for whatever it is, you know, in this meditative state. But this is something that is going to help you embrace your shadow as well as listening. Learn to listen, family, during this time as well. This is a message, okay? During that shadow work meditation, details are key for what you need to have and use, what type of essential walls you might wanna use, what type of singing bowl, you know? Uh, toning forks, whatever, because that's being intentional. Ask your gods questions during this time. Where has this moment been living in my body or how have I been, I mean, why have I been going through this? Why am I feeling like this? What is it that you want me to do, ancestors, you know? These are the questions. This is also within the shadow work session and this meditation, this This is also within this Shadowwork session and this meditation, this also helps you with your nervous system, okay? The calm. It's just like, and, and, and breath and your technique of, of you breathing while you're doing this medit- meditation as well, family, is another thing that you should be paying attention to, okay? And so that's pretty much she said about that whole technique. Now me going into my own twist of this is that, listen, Shadowwork is best practiced on a regular basis, okay? So you must do this on a regular basis. See, the ancestors is telling me to learn to listen for somebody who needs to hear this as well. We must listen, okay? Don't be too distracted by the things that's going on in the external that the internal you're not turning into, you know, going within. Because if you do that, your external will be just as much in chaos, right? Because you haven't turned within and actually been able to get quiet and listen to what the ancestors is telling you the next way to go. So this is all about alignment, okay? Coming with learn, uh, learn to listen today as our Shadowwork message for today. And this is all about you embracing that shadow within. Learning to listen. We have to all learn to listen because we get off task sometimes, family. We do. And we don't listen. We start to get distracted by the things that's happening in this world and we don't go, we don't even pay attention to the Cosmic Bread Crumbs that are being scattered in front of us. Sometimes we feel like it's happening because, you know, it's just happening and that's not true. Everything happens for a reason, okay? So you must know this. This is something that you must pay attention to. And this is just another sign and synchronicity that the ancestors is throwing at some of you. If you've been, you know, maybe being a little too busy, now is the time for you to decide, you know? I gotta take this day at this time to do this meditation and listen to my ancestors. You know what I'm saying? Or, you know, maybe just get somewhere, like I used to tell you guys, even if it's in the car, you might need to get somewhere and just be quiet and be still and just listen. And that was confirmation, okay? Cause I ain't even hit the phone, it just rung and went off. That was confirmation, okay? So, yes, you know, spirit is definitely speaking, you know? Like I said, i- it definitely came to me in reference of learn to listen as the message and it was all about me listening, especially after receiving so many di- different synchronicities lately. The knocking, the numbers, you know, different things, you know? So at that time, you know that the ancestors is trying to gain your intention in some shape, form or fashion and I knew it then. You know, it came to me, but I'm like, gosh, you know? What is it that I'm not listening? Ask. Ask. What is it that I'm not listening and what is it that I'm not picking up on, ancestors? Show it to me, reveal it to me, you know? This is, this is what you should be asking in your meditation and in your mind's eye when you're listening, when you're talking to the ancestors, okay? Go to your altars. These are the things, okay? So this one wasn't gonna be a long Shadowwork session, but ancestors put that on my heart to make sure I put this out there. Learn to listen again and to embrace the shadow, family. Do your shadow work, okay? Let's not, let's not get off of, you know, we get off of, we get off of task sometimes and it's okay. But we gotta get back to our Shadowwork. Pick you a day of, one day a week, okay? You don't have to do it every day, but pick you one day a week that you can do your Shadowwork, alright? You can tap in with self to make sure you are right. You know, sometimes it's just about us being still, right? Get your mind right, cause there's a lot of stuff happening out here that gets us off task. And a lot of things that'll make us, our emotions and our thoughts and our mind run haywire. And then when it's that way, family, you start making bad decisions. So you gotta slow down, you know? You gotta slow down and you gotta start listening again, okay? And for those who, this may be new to you, this is a good time for you to learn to listen. Start doing you some meditation, start doing your Shadowwork and get back to journaling. For some of the, some of us who have stopped journaling, I know I got off task with a lot of my journaling too, but I'm back at it. You know, back to my journaling, because when I was able to journal, I'm able to write things out that I feel, you know? Instead of holding those things in. And then sometimes, not sometimes, all the time, all the time, when you're listening to what spirit is telling you, you need to write that down too, alright? So this is Shadowwork session. If you missed a lot of it at the beginning, rewind it back. If you're just coming in, that's cool too. But this one is about learning to listen, okay, and embracing that shadow, alright? And if you've, you've been listening, good, right? You should be doing well. But if you got off task and you're not listening or you feel like there's something that is coming to you from the ancestors that you're not hearing, now is the time. And I just gave you some steps on how to get back to that, that meditative state, alright? So this is the message. Um, yes, I'm gonna restart. Yes, Chrissy, exactly sis. We all get off, you know? Yes, especially journaling. Yes, me too, me too, right? Yes, sis. Hey Queen? Yeah, so no, you're not late at all. Um, yes, I must start listening to the signs, right Eldra? But see how we, we paying attention to things now? It's okay, family. It's alright. We just gonna jump right back on it, you know what I'm saying? But that's why I made this, this Shadowwork session today, short and sweet. That's why I'm not on camera, because guess what? Today is about listening. Listening, family, and not just listening to me, listen to the most high and the ancestors. The communication is coming through, but some of us ain't listening. Some of us got off of task and we distracted by our everyday lives. And to listen is to change that path and to change our everyday lives to, to shift some things. We gotta shift some energy and sometimes shifting that energy, it's all about the ancestors and connecting to the divine and listening to what they want us to do, okay? So, um, it'll save your life. Ancestors is always, always saving our lives. So we gotta listen, alright? So that, that's the message for today. And, um, I love you guys. Um, this is Shadowwork session, nice and sweet. I changed the topic and I also got a, a visual for you guys and I'mma put some other stuff up that's gonna help you also in reference of meditation. But, um, and I'm gonna have a High, a High Priestess Key three, three, three episode up very soon on some other things that, you know, we need to tap into and how we tap into spirit and so forth as well, alright? We're doing readings and different things like that, alright? But I will see you guys soon on the channel. Tomorrow is Thursday Night Insight. We're still gonna be here at six thirty. So Thursday night is Insight tomorrow night, family. I will be here on camera, okay? But today was about you listening, alright? And if you ain't got this book, you might wanna get this Shadowwork book, cause it's really good, alright? Alright, I love you guys. Peace, family. Peace, peace, peace. Yeah, you needed it too. I love you too, family. I love y'all, man. I'm glad y'all here and make sure y'all be accountable for yourself and your Shadowwork. You are so welcome, Sharon. You are so welcome. Good night. You're welcome, um, Tansless. Much love, sis. Yes. Alright, family, I'm out.